Okay, good. Good morning and welcome to our School Board Work Session. Our first session today will be on the UVA Preschool Study. And we have with us Dr. Robert Pianta, Dean of the Curry School of Education at UVA, Dr. Sloan Presidio, our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, and Maura Burke, the Director of Office of Early Childhood Curriculum and Grant Management. This morning, we have an hour for our work session. The goal of this session is purely informational and for us to get a better sense of what the study will be. So I will ask my colleagues to please listen to the presentation. I will take down names if you have questions, but we will leave our questions to the end. Dr. Braybrand, if you do want to make any comments in the meantime, please let me know. I'm happy to make an exception. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Presidio.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Palczek. And good morning to all the board members and to Superintendent Braybrand. We're excited to have him onboard now in his second full week. And I appreciate the opening comments, and I just wanted to say a little bit more, very brief remarks about the study. Dr. Pianta is the lead investigator in this study, which is a longitudinal study funded by the federal government's Institute for Education Sciences. And we've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Pianta and his colleagues at the University of Virginia for about a year now. And I have the opportunity to lead many research projects and collaborate on many research projects. And this is really the favorite one that I've had an opportunity to participate in my five years here in Fairfax, primarily due to two factors. One, the interest level and the importance of early childhood education. And I know that the school board has a great deal of interest in the findings from this study. And then the collaboration with Dr. Pianta has been really the most professional that I've experienced in my five years here. So we're very, very pleased to work very closely with him. And today's information is really a preliminary report looking at year one of a longitudinal study that we hope will give us really good supplemental information to internal studies that we've done on the impact, the continuing impact of preschool and early childhood education over students' careers with us in their K-12 experiences here in Fairfax County Public Schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pianta to share some background information and some of the preliminary results from year one of the study.
Great. Thanks very much, Sloan. I will only echo the point that I've had the opportunity to collaborate with school districts for many, many years on studies like this. And similarly, feel very much the same that this has been an extraordinarily positive and productive and easy collaboration, largely due to Sloan and Maura and their staff and leadership. So, and it's a real pleasure to collaborate with Fairfax on this. I think one of the things that we're looking to do, or hopefully will be able to do in this study, will actually showcase the kinds of investments and the impacts that those investments have been made, that have been making over time, over the last decade, and illustrate that as part of a broader set of studies that are being conducted across the country. You may want to scoot over a little bit. Okay. So this is a study that is really about what works. So what I'll do is kind of frame the study, walk into some details, and we can have some questions at the end. So, most of you know that the big question that the nation has been obsessed with for the most part is whether pre-K is effective or not. And at the same time, we've rolled out many, many programs in localities and states and federally across the country, so that the point now is almost 70% of kids are enrolled in some form of preschool currently. So the question about whether pre-K is effective or not is, in some sense, been answered because we have opened these programs. The real question is, how is it that the experiences that children are having in preschools intersect with the kinds of experiences they're having K-3? And how do we make those experiences most effective? So this study is situated, not in sort of the high stakes, is something effective or not, but it's situated in the context of, how do we understand the kinds of experiences that kids are having within programs that contribute most to their learning and development? And then be able to take those implications into the field and build on them more effectively. There's a big gap in a lot of this research in pre-K in the K-3 years. So we've got, you know, we have a lot of studies that have been done on the preschool year, and then the follow-up points have usually been the state tests in most states in third grade. And, you know, you find out these questions, well, it works sometimes, doesn't work other times. The Tennessee study, most recently, being one of those examples. And so what we're trying to do is kind of fill in that gap. So this Early Learning Network was established, in a sense, to fill that gap, and it's composed of a number of teams across the country, Fairfax is being one. So really, our focus is really on the Fairfax program itself. We have many, many partners. I don't need to go into this in great detail, but this has been an extraordinarily collaborative effort. And again, great credit to the staff here, as well as Fairfax County Office for Children, because we've involved those programs that serve county youngsters at four-years-old auspices. We've worked closely this past year with roughly 129 teachers and associated kids on that. And this Early Learning Network, which is funded by the Department of Education, of which this is part, okay, of which this is part, is listed down there. This study, there are five studies that are going on in different sites, North Carolina, Ohio, and others. This study is the largest and most diverse of the Early Learning Network studies. So a real, I think, point of pride there. This is our project team. Okay. So, two main components to this study, the largest one being this longitudinal study that starts with children in pre-K and will follow them all the way through third grade. And then wrapped in and threaded through that will be, this is a large study that involves assessments of kids and observations of classrooms, but we're also doing interviews that we're trying to get a sense from leaders in the school and in the community, teachers and parents, about how all this works from their perspective, too. So there's kind of this big aggregate study, and then there's the smaller study that we call a policy study. I'll give you some details on that. Okay. So this is really a study that will track three samples across time. The first sample is all the kids who entered this past year into the pre-K, the publicly-funded pre-K programs in the county. The largest one, obviously, being the county schools program, then the other one being the Office for Children. So that's the pre-K sample, okay? Then, starting this year, we enroll kids who did not have pre-K in one of the publicly-funded programs, either the school, county schools, or the Office for Children, but who would have been eligible potentially for those programs. So those kids show up in kindergarten very soon, and we're working very closely right now with Maura to figure out how to identify those kids and enroll those kids in the study. And so they become kind of the no-pre-K control group, okay? And then finally, in those two samples, we're doing, the UVA team is doing lots of assessments of the children's progress and doing observations in the children's classrooms. And then we will also draw data on all of the kids who are in the current cohort of kids that would be in kindergarten this year. So the same cohort as these two samples, to try to draw in broader comparisons that we can make to district norms and division norms.
I could pause you, sorry, for one second. I think Dr. Braybrand-
I just wanted to ask one question. It's week two, so I'm catching up to speed.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Do we know yet what percentage of kids with no center-based pre-K who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, what that number is, what that percentage is for Fairfax County Schools? Not, or-
Maura? Yeah?
So we'll have that information in the fall after all the kids are registered. It's not an incredible number, but it's still several thousand kids every year that come in without pre-K.
Yeah. I think that's based on sort of prior history, yeah. Okay. So the longitudinal study will be framed around these, a series of questions. Okay. The first one being kind of this, does pre-K or not contribute to kids' growth as they enter kindergarten and into, all the way into third grade? So that's kind of the, a bit of the high-stakes question, is pre-K effective or not? But the second question is really the most important one, and we will have results on this question, the early-stage results on this question, this fall. So this could be something, actually, when I'm done, we might have a conversation about some of the kinds of issues you'd be interested in that we can partner together on, on data. So this question here is really, what are the kinds of factors and experiences that are situated within that pre-K year? How the programs are structured, what curriculum might be used, what are the teacher practices in the classroom, any number of supports, professional development, and likewise, that contribute to kids' growth during the pre-K year, their success as they enter kindergarten, and then their success beyond in K-3, on a range of different outcomes, most of which we'll assess and some of which will be part of district data. And then finally, what we will also be doing is looking at, okay, how do these pre-K program factors combine with experiences in K-3 to contribute to how kids are doing over that period of time? So it's really, is pre-K effective or not? Does pre-K, what is it about pre-K that contributes to kindergarten readiness and beyond? And then what is it about pre-K combined with kindergarten, first and second-grade experiences that contribute to kids' ultimate success as they hit, as they hit third grade? These are all kind of related questions, but they're different vectors at this larger issue of, what are the experiences the kids have in these pre-K to three settings and how they contribute to their development? An important part of this study that's kind of near and dear to our heart is really to be able to spend time in the PK3 classrooms, to be able to do a much better job describing what are the qualities of teachers' interactions with kids, instructionally, socially, supportive self-regulation, and other kinds of skills, supportive language. What's the kind of exposure to instruction and content that's going on, PK to three? And how are kids engaging, okay? Surprisingly, we have, as you probably, you know, can also attest to, we have extraordinary data on kids' performance. We have, in most school systems and across the country, and we have very, very little information on what classrooms look like for kids, pre-K, first, second, and third grade. So this is a real opportunity, I think, to showcase the quality and range of experiences that are being provided for kids. And as we do that, we'll be able to describe the kind of patterns of kids' experiences, consistency and inconsistency in those patterns. And really, to our way of thinking, this is an unprecedented focus, ability to focus on these environments. As I also mentioned, aside from that larger study, we're also going to be conducting interviews with key stakeholders to try to get their sense, from a more nuanced perspective, on the kind of policies that, and procedures and protocols that you've used in this, in the county and in the school division over the years, to really create one of the, you know, in many ways, one of the best pre-K programs and early learning programs, I think, that's in the country. And so those kind of conversations are really important to elevate the kind of behind-the-scenes work that gets done to support strong early education programs. So these are just some of the examples of questions and focal areas that we will be spending time on as we conduct these interviews with stakeholders over the period of time. It's really a sense of try to, how do you identify gaps? How do you create policies and protocols and procedures around gaps? And then how do you track those, the impacts of those policies so that you understand, as a school division, what's working and what's not? And I will say that that kind of work, again, my experience in many other school systems just simply doesn't happen in a lot of other school systems as steadily. So I think this is a way to really, again, showcase the good work being done here. All right. So, the early findings from the first year. These are the numbers of teachers and kids, the first row from the county schools, and then the Office for Children classrooms. We go to 130 teachers this first year and 1,500 kids. So we would be, that's our pre-K sample. So we'd be looking to kind of match those kids in a no-pre-K sample of about 1,500 kids this coming kindergarten. They're drawn from both the school and community center-based classrooms that have received public funding. Again, we're trying to track kids who are touched by public dollars that flow into preschool, not kids that are just where their parents have decided to put them in a community-based preschool for a year or two, or for parental purchase childcare. This should be no surprise to anybody, but this is, you have an extraordinarily diverse county. And again, I think a way to be able to showcase how strong public programs can be put in place for a wide range of kids that represent a very broad and diverse sample. The largest group here clearly being kids where Spanish is spoken in the household, and for those children, we assess them in Spanish when we did the work with them in the classroom to ensure that. Okay. This is a little bit dense on the detail, but I'll try to just run through this rather quickly. But this is the kind of information that we are collecting in both of these studies. These interviews, I just mentioned the policy study, are really just going to be focused to, this is the pre-K sample, and these are data that we basically collected this past year. As we move into this coming year, the year we're about to start, we will snag and enroll the children who are in the no-pre-K group, follow the pre-K group, and then those groups follow forward in grades one to three. The bulk of the data collection involves a series of parent surveys that get conducted periodically throughout the study, teacher surveys, fall and spring of each academic year, classroom observations that occur fall and spring each year, and then these direct assessments of the children. I'll show you what those assessments are, that again, occur fall and spring in pre-K and kindergarten, and then in the spring of the grades one through three. And then, as I said earlier, we'll draw down administrative data that you also have available. In this particular study, we're, in the direct assessment part, the kind of activities that we're doing with the children to assess their skills, we are directly assessing literacy, math, and general knowledge using the Woodcock-Johnson standardized test of children's skills. And these are the tests, the applied problems as a math test, skills, primarily math skills, letter-word identification, picture vocabulary within language arts. Quantitative concept is really kids' understanding of the larger concepts of math, and academic knowledge is really to try to get a sense of their broader knowledge of the world and content exposure. Executive function and self-regulation, these are these kind of softer skills that we think are more and more important in kids' lives. And actually, there's very good reason to believe that at these early ages and particular preschool programs, that these skills are really the pivot point for an awful lot of kids to be successful later on academically, even to the point where there's some indication that, in some sense, almost less exposure to the direct instruction of academic skills, but more exposure to self-regulation support can be better for kids at these earlier grades. So that's a big question that we will be able to address a bit. Okay. These are, we're testing primarily working memory, which is kids' ability to keep information in their head while they're doing a task, and inhibition, which is their ability to kind of restrain themselves from acting. This is the fundamental task of most three- and four-year-olds, how to restrain yourself while you have to wait. And they're assessed by this pencil tap task, which is inhibition. This is essentially head, shoulders, knees, and toes. So you give kids directions and you have them repeat the directions. It's working memory, and then digit span is remembering a set of digits. Then, while we're in the classrooms doing observations, we'll be spending time assessing the qualities of teacher-child interaction using the Classroom Assessment Scoring System, which gives you these broader sense of qualities of teacher's behavior, language stimulation, sensitivity towards kids' emotional needs. And then we're also going in and coding the degree to which the child may be exposed to a language arts lesson, or a literacy lesson, or a math lesson, or a self-regulation activity. So we're trying to get an idea of what the content of instruction is and the children's exposure to that content. Okay. That's the primary set of assessments in the pre-K study. And then the policy study, we will be speaking with this broad group of stakeholders. Again, this is kind of being threaded throughout in informal interviews and focus groups throughout the period of the study. Okay. So, results from the first year. We are, as I said, we've been in 130 classrooms with roughly 1,500 children in the pre-K year. This slide is, really is tracking the performance of the kids from fall to spring on those subtests of the Woodcock-Johnson. So the green subtest, these four bars over here are the fall scores on these subtests. These four are the spring scores on the same subtest. So these are like pre-post for the same kids. Letter-word identification being early literacy skills, picture vocabulary being kids' receptive language, how much they understand language and vocabulary, applied problems being quantitative skills and math skills, computation, quantitative concepts being math understanding. In each one of these, to be able to get a sense of gains over the course of the year, you would look at, the box represents sort of the variation in the sample of kids, and that cross-hatch line is the average score of the kids in the sample, the 1,500 kids. And so this is showing you that, on average, those letter-word identification scores increased substantially over the course of the year. Essentially, the take-home lesson here is that the kids increased on all of their academic concepts as they were assessed over the course of the year on these standardized tests. The next step, of course, trying to be, what were the experiences that they had in classrooms that contributed to those gains? And were those gains greater for some kind of kids and less for some other kinds of kids? So that's the work we will be doing this summer. Okay. Then the next slide shows the similar setup for the assessment of working memory, this being the head-shoulders task, and inhibitory control, this being the pencil tap tasks. These are less standardized tasks, they're a little more informal, it's not like a standardized test, so that oftentimes, what's very interesting to us here would be, for example, the working memory test. So in this case, kids started, there was a range for kids, but the average was quite low on working memory, okay? And there's no norms for these tests that are really well-established. We're really looking at the division as a norming base. But you can see the substantial rise in that over the course of the year and the increase in variation. So what you're seeing here, really, my way of thinking, we would need to examine this, but you're seeing, I would interpret, the effects of intervening, experiencing classrooms, taking kids and giving them the opportunity to learn these working memory skills, and all of a sudden, kids exposed. You take a lot of kids that are exposed to activities, and you see an increase in range, and you see the average go up. So we'll begin to look at that. And you also see on the inhibitory control, this task is used quite often in research studies, a significant bump there, too. So again, these are early, early results, basically demonstrating the kinds of moves that kids are making in their academic skills and in the features of their self-regulation and executive function. And the next step will be to determine what are the kinds of things that they experienced in classrooms? How do those experiences in classrooms connect with maybe their language or family background? Maybe the skills that they had coming in at the beginning of the year? That we'll begin to unpack that a little bit more. And then to kind of wind up, and then be delighted to have a conversation and further questions. You know, we know that you've already done a fair amount of work to evaluate the program itself. Recent reports have been helpful to us to provide some context for interpreting the results that we'll get. I think one of the things we'll see here is that, you know, we're going to be able to, in this study, round out the kind of information available on the kid's performance and go into much more depth than the kids' experiences in classrooms than you've been able to do before, which I think can be quite informative to the work that you're trying to do, most particularly looking at the way that program design features, the way classroom features are contributing to the gains that we just saw for kids. You know, there's also this question of key points in time. You know, I mentioned this, I mentioned this point about, do you, should we focus earlier on, so if you look at the period from pre-K to third grade as kind of a trajectory or a pipeline, should we be focusing earlier in that pipeline on some kinds of learning experience and skills, and later in that pipeline on some other skills? So these are the kinds of things that we'll be able to look at in a little more nuanced way. And as I think we've said already, we're just starting to collect these data and compile it, so we're really, we're quite excited to work together on this. And I will say, a big point of our efforts here is to work collaboratively with the school division. And so as there are questions that you might have, as you learn more about the study itself, we're glad to use the data in ways that can be helpful to you as you deliberate decisions and the like. So, that's, that's that. Thank you.
Say something before I take questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Pianta. I think we've all been looking forward to the study, and as you say, we did look at some initial findings from our internal program evaluations office last year, so some of the questions may be related to that. Colleagues, I have six of our colleagues up for questions. I ask that you try to put all of your questions in your initial. If need be, I will do one go back, but we do have a long day, and we have about half an hour left for our important discussions. So, right now, I have Tammy, followed by Janie, and then Elizabeth.
Thank you so much. Tell me your name, Pianta?
Pianta.
Pianta, Pianta. Thank you, Dr. Pinata. This is very important to our entire board, as well as our system. Just so you know a little bit about me, this has been one of my advocacy's that I have, one of the reasons I got on the board is, this was one of my advocacy points. And I think we are doing a much better job. I'm going to focus my questions on policy, I guess, and what you're going to do, because that's important to us. I think the study looks tremendous. The data that you're finding is good. When we look at the policy slides and you talk about who you're collecting data from, and maybe I'm not understanding this completely, but I see that you're interviewing a lot of the people who are in the Office for Children, also here, who are staff. Or will you be interviewing anybody who, any school board members or board of supervisors members, or legists, or people from the State House?
Yeah. Great, a great question. The answer to that being yes.
Okay.
And in fact, we just, I kind of wanted to wait until we had this opportunity to brief you again on the study, to then roll into identifying who might be the key people and how we might involve them in the interviews about policy. I should also say that we're looking at documentation of policy that exists, both, as we know, the policy filters in part from the state that directs some of the spending and allocation of dollars and how programs are structured. And then the school division and county make a lot of policy about how that state, those state resources will be filtered further, and then what would be the supplemental and developmental investments that might be made and the policies that follow those. So, we want to get a sense of how all that fits together, and then how that cascades down into programs and schools as parents and children experience them. So, we would love to, we would love to have the opportunity to interview you and/or others who might be interested in this.
Yeah. I think that's very important. I sat on the Childcare Advisory Council, which is a citizens group, to that, I chaired that twice prior to sitting on the school board, and that's where my interest came. that twice prior to sitting on the school board, and that's where my interest came about, you know, so many studies, well, of course, we know there's a Head Start study out there that says there is no, there was no beneficial, but I think prior to that, there've been many, many studies that show the sincere benefits of high-quality pre-K. So, and part of, also, there's a group, I don't know if the staff has talked to you about, the SKIPPED Committee, Successful Children and Youth Policy Team. And that was something that, when one of my, we as two boards, the Board of Supervisors, our funding body and us, we both, I think sincerely agree that this is an important issue, but we haven't come to terms as to how we can best fund this. And so, one of my colleagues who's not here right now, Ms. Hines, she and I went to the Board of Supervisors and said, what, how can we get a joint committee together? Now unfortunately, fortunately, or unfortunately, I shouldn't say that, the SKIPPED Committee has kind of grown tentacles and has gone off into other directions as well. It was our hope that SKIPPED would initially deal with this, but they are dealing with it right now. So that's also important, that you understand that that group exists. Talking to somebody from, Dr. Presidio, if you want to speak to...
Well, I was just going to say, that's a really important point that you're making. And again, that's another group that we definitely need to engage in this work, so we could obviously share findings with that group, initial findings, as well as include them in the policy interviews. And then, as we get a little bit farther in the longitudinal findings from this study, we could engage them in some conversations about, how do you use the findings here to really drive policy and drive priorities for the SKIPPED Committee?
Correct. I think that's very important, and I would love to be one of those people you speak to. And I'm, you know, encouraged by the early data points, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Janie, followed by Elizabeth, and then Eliang.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I am very pleased that we are doing this study, and I am very pleased that we have so many stakeholders involved. I have no idea if other states or other localities have the kind of partnership that we have with our own Head Start PISAP, with the County Office for Children, with the School Readiness Team, and I know over the years, because I've been involved in other pieces of quality early childhood, and that we braid our funds, and we use all of them to try to expand, to get to as many children as possible. So, we've been working at this for some time. So, the initial results that you showed, certainly, we would hope to see that, because we spend a lot of time and a lot of money, and there's a lot of beliefs that we are really trying to maximize these programs, maximize the dollars, and get the best return. So, having said that, I'm very pleased that you all are involved, and I am pleased that we've reached out to a highly regarded professional group to help us with this, so that the results that we get will be useful. And I guess that's my last piece, is, are there any other jurisdictions that have created this unusual partnership that we have done? And then, as I say, braiding funds? Or are we the only ones that have taken this approach? In your experience, where are we with what we're doing?
Yeah, no, I think, well, we've worked in many, many districts across the country over the course of the last 10, 15 years, and I would say quite confidently that you're ahead of the pack on the kind of infrastructure that needs to be put in place from a policy, funding, and programmatic perspective, and that you've done a very good job of kind of staying the course and continuing to attend to the nurturing of that infrastructure. Describing that infrastructure, as you just pointed out, is very important for other jurisdictions that are attempting to do this, do this kind of work. Because oftentimes, you see a very, we know that this, for example, that the money flows from many sources. You've mentioned braiding of funding. Many jurisdictions, that money cascades from those different sources all the way to the classroom, in ways that tend to create challenges for people at the classroom level where the job is to serve kids. You've done a much more, I think sophisticated job of thinking about how we can create synthetic ways of drawing funding streams together, to be able to buffer, in some sense, the classroom experience, and use those funds in a very targeted and strategic way. So, I would only point out, as I did before, that describing what you've done is going to be very important for other jurisdictions that are facing challenges that you have faced, continue to face, but have, in a sense, coped with, I think, far more successfully than other jurisdictions.
Great, thank you. And I have to acknowledge, a lot of the wisdom of this has come from staff, from Maura and the Office for Children, and our own early childhood professionals. So the educators, I think, have done a fabulous job.
For such a large and diverse jurisdiction, it's extraordinary work.
Right. The school board, I don't think can take credit for this. I think it's our professional educators that have done a fabulous job with this. Thank you.
Elizabeth, followed by Eliang, and then Karen.
First of all, anything that has to do with data, and data in context, that's my bailiwick. So, I have a question about the universe of students in pre-K, and you sort of answered it a little bit later in the presentation, when you said you were only interested in children who public dollars touch. But why not have sort of an alternate path that looks at kids who are in private pre-K? Because it could be, you know, this is sort of, for my colleagues, the John Faust question of, you know, could a half a day of pre-K, it's better than none? And so, why not? That's a simple first question.
Well, there's two answers to that. The easy why-not answer is because we weren't funded to do that, and we're really, in a sense, limited by the parameters of the funding for the project itself. That said, because we will be able to draw the administrative data in from all of the other kids in the district that moved through the school division, and that those families have, when they enroll for kindergarten, complete a questionnaire that will give us a little bit of an idea of whether they were in a publicly-funded program, which is, we're using this questionnaire right now, or were in some other type of care, will have some ability to get some purchase on the question that you're asking. Not in the level of detail, but some ability to do that.
That's a shame, because I think that, you know, another comprehensive layer to this could have been, you know, looking at kids who had some pre-K versus, you know, maybe full day. Another question I had is...
I want to, maybe just clarify this. We will, if there were public dollars that went to them, either through Head Start or through, and some of those dollars flowed to part-time programs, we will be able to look at some of it.
Well, and that builds nicely into my second question, which is, in the universe of students who did have pre-K, is there a differential, or are you tracking if they've had one or two years?
Yes.
You have?
We'll be able to know that.
So you'll be able to tease out, I mean, I would think, I mean, you know, the hypothesis would be that if they've had two years, potentially, that you're going to have better executive functions.
Okay. Yeah, the parents of those children fill out a very detailed questionnaire about their experiences in pre-K for a couple of years prior to going to school, and, interestingly, their experiences in the summers, which oftentimes tends to be this period of some decline in kids' performance.
And can you go to page 15, please? Slide 15. So, my question is, for the range, first of all, for the average, and for the change in the range, were the children who were at the top of the range in the beginning, the same children who were at the top of the range the second time around?
I don't have those data yet. Literally, these are just hot off the press. We haven't done the predictive modeling yet on that. I would anticipate that's probably the case, but we don't know.
And then you wonder, is that something that is a home-based impact? That they come in at the top of the range, and they continue to grow rapidly at the top of the range? So that there's something that's being affected by pre-K, but then there's also a home-based element?
Great question. And when we look at that question, again, parents have filled out a very detailed questionnaire about their experiences, prior to, the children's experiences prior to coming in school. We will adjust our modeling for all of those experiences and all that information we have about the kids and their families coming in, so we try to create sort of, all things being equal, conditions. Then we'll look at the kids where they started, we'll look at the experiences that they had in pre-K, and we look at where they end, to look at precisely this question that you're looking at.
And then the final question I have is, you say, very complementarily, that we're ahead of the pack, you know, we've thrown down the marker, but, and I ask this not to be, you know, either self-deprecating or too hard on ourselves, but, you know, we're a large organization that benefits from, you know, a lot of different things, most notably, the most highly educated parent population in the nation. So, my question is, are we ahead of the pack because we're ahead of the pack? And does that, I don't necessarily see that as the same thing of where we could be, like, are we where we should be, given who we are? As opposed to just measuring us against other jurisdictions? Sometimes I think that that's maybe not a fair measuring stick, and there should be a self-assessment? Are you gonna, like, are you gonna kind of look and say, look, you know, you're not like every other school district, and you're doing really well, but...
Well, that's part of what you'll interpret, you know, and we can have those conversations. We'll have opportunities. We have many of the same assessments that I pointed out are being conducted in the other parts of, the other members of the network, rural North Carolina, Ohio, very, very different contexts. So we'll have some contrasting information to be able to provide a little more context for that kind of conversation.
The only thing that I really wanted to add to that is, I think Ms. Schultz raises a really interesting and important point about the home-based experiences versus the school-based experiences. So one of the things that I'm really excited about, in terms of partnering with the University of Virginia on this project, is we're going to get a lot of information about the school-based experiences that have the greatest impact for students. And that's something that is really difficult for, you know, the Office of Instructional Services to actually be in classrooms observing, collecting that kind of information. So that's going to help us really drive our practice, to make sure that we have the most impactful practices happening in the classroom, and through the information that UVA is collecting through the parent surveys and parent interviews, we're going to learn more about the things that are happening at home as well, so that we can actually incorporate some of that information into our program to share with parents of students that are receiving services in our program, to try to more equalize the playing field there, if you will.
Well, I really appreciate that, Dr. Presidio, because that's the secret sauce. Because really, what that does is that teases out what the priorities are, and then allows us, from a policy perspective, to begin the conversation of directing dollars to the things that make the most difference.
That's right.
Thank you. Eliang, followed by Karen and Megan.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Pianta. I have a few questions for clarification first. On that, page 15, I think I might have missed this, what's the dotted line, dotted, orange line?
That is a really good question, and if I knew the answer to that question, I'd answer it right now. I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, I was wondering whether there was just like folding line of that piece of paper.
I'll get that.
Okay, thank you. The next question has to do with...
Oh, I know what that is. It's the ceiling for that inhibitory control test. It's the ceiling, you can't go above that.
You can go above that.
Just for the inhibitory control test, yes. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. On slide number nine, the participants' universe of about 1450, 1448, to be exact, I was looking at the ratio between the numbers for county programs versus school systems, that's sort of like, maybe five to one ratio. Do I assume that they provide probability from programs, county? Today, do they provide different programs, content-wise, how they deliver?
So, there are commonalities in that there's always a curriculum, the length of day is similar, there is comprehensive services that are provided to kids, there are some differences in the professional learning that may happen, although there is professional learning across both programs. So, there are similarities and there are differences, but I think at its core, they're similar in terms of curriculum, length of day, professional learning that happens.
So, to that point, though, we've discussed the need to be able to disaggregate out and separate out the data from the county programs from FCPs programs.
Okay, because I see, you know, from the numbers, I see teacher-student ratio is vastly different. Correct. So whether that will be a factor that we could look into after we see the results, and whether just having a 247 from the county's program, whether that's not going to give us statistically valid results. I mean, that was what I wanted to ask.
I think there, in terms of the children that attend the program, there is a slight difference in that our criteria to be, we often have the poorest of the poor, in terms of the criteria that we take for the public schools, because it's berated money with the childcare, that the income for parents can be a little higher in that program. So often, oftentimes, the population in terms of the parent income might be a little different as well.
We do have all that data to consider when that results.
And our kids are in classrooms with like children in terms of their, the income eligibility, so we only have income-eligible children in our classrooms, while in the community, it's a much more mixed classroom, in that there are families who are paying full price to go to those community programs, because they're not income-eligible. So it's in terms of the income of families that is very mixed, and the community is not mixed in the public schools.
Thank you. Could you go to the next slide, number 10? I just have one possibly with a follow-up questions on this one. This is, looks like based upon the language, maybe home language, while their first language is spoken?
This is the language spoken in the home. The parent fills out a questionnaire.
Is there a better way to look at then? Because we talk about, you know, achievement gap, not along the language lines, but we do look at in the school system, along the racial lines, et cetera, but this was, was socioeconomic, but this is language.
Yeah, and this is just one variable that we have to characterize the diversity of the sample and their backgrounds. We have income...
But we have the racial data, so that we could take a look at.
That's right.
Other data. Thank you, thank you so much. That's all that I have.
Thank you.
Wow, I am so excited to see you all doing this, and I'm also thrilled to hear that we are ahead of the pack on our infrastructure, but it's always good to see how we can continue to improve our processes and our policies. So, I think that this is, I look forward to seeing how this evolves. Do have a couple of questions. On page nine, when you talk about, no, I'm sorry, prior to that, where you talk about both school-based versus community-center-based programs, when you look at the community-center-based programs, are you disaggregating that between, because there are different models for community-based programs? We have a nerd, where, for example, in the western side of the county, we actually have more center-based programs for our high-needs kids. We have a very large waitlist on my side of the county, the east side of the county, and in particular, we've addressed some of the short seat shortages by giving professional training to in-home care providers. And I'm wondering if you are including the in-home care providers that have received training as part of this study?
That question, I don't know specifically, but I can tell you that we are touching, if public dollars flowed to children in Fairfax County for the purposes of providing them with a preschool education... with a preschool education in the year before they go to school, we did the best we could to get to all of those kids in all of those auspices. But some of them were, were, quite frankly, some of them were serving only one child and it became kind of a pragmatic issue that we couldn't go get one child versus others. But the, we are touching a wide range of programs that are the, the kind of administrative structure that is serving the, the child. And then we'll go in underneath that and assess all of the classrooms and children using the same assessments. So we'll be able to, part of, part of the questions I think people are interested in, which I clearly understand, what are the features of the programs that matter? Where it's located, how many staff it has, what kind of staff it has, those type of features. And then there are features of a classroom that sometime vary consistent with program structures and sometimes not. And we'll be able to start unpacking some of that.
And that's precisely why I asked because there are a much larger, larger proportion of the students in the Route One corridor that are receiving those services which are publicly funded. But they're receiving them in apartments and homes that are professional caregivers. And it's being promoted as being the same experience. And I would love to know whether or not we can actually quantify that it has the same outcomes.
All right, Sloan, we'll have to, I'll, we'll follow up on this question.
Okay, that would be great. Additionally, I see in the slide 10, you talk about the diversity of Fairfax being represented in the study, which I think is wonderful. I do wonder if we are including our special ed students because many of our special ed students qualify for pre-K earlier than, and actually get seats. And so I would like to see that we are including them.
Yeah, the answer to that is, is yes, in the sense of the children who have speech and language type IEPs will be, are included in the, in the assessments that we're, that we're doing because the assessments can be administered to those children. Some of the children that have more severe disabilities would not be included in that initial sample, but we will be following the whole.
Cohort.
Cohort forward. So we'll know whether they, those children received pre-K and then we'll be able to adjust later on for looking at, at their outcomes later on.
That would be great. I think that follows up somewhat on Mr. Moon's question. And then if we look at the periods of when we're going to do data collection on page 11, and we talk about the grades one through three random sample.
Yes.
I'm wondering if you're going to be looking at outcomes based, you say FCPs data. The data sets, are you going to look at not only SOL scores, but perhaps COGAT and N-NAT scores? And then participation or identification into our advanced academic programs?
So we've been working really closely with the Department of Information Technology to make sure that UVA's got access to all of the internal measures. So things like the DRA, the MRA, COGAT, all of those internal measures, they'll have access to that information.
Excellent.
As appropriate.
As I said, fantastic, and I look forward to seeing how this evolves.
Thank you. Great questions.
Thank you. Karen, I have Megan followed by Sandy and then Ryan.
So I understand Dean Pianta, you're the, the dean of the Curry School of Education. So it's a particular pleasure that you would come up from Charlottesville and spend the morning with us. I'm extremely excited, not just by the study, but this partnership of our school system with your highly, highly respected School of Education. And I hope we will benefit from additional research work with UVA. My twin sister and her husband are both college professors and very much focused on research. And as someone who now finds herself in, in a role as, as others have said earlier this morning, we're not just policymakers, but then we also have a tremendous responsibility to figure out how to direct $2.8 billion a year. And so this is exactly what I have really enjoyed in my time on the board and with the leadership of our superintendents and, and their team. How can we draw upon research-based, you know, best practices and really help, help us drive the decisions? So following up on some of the things that my colleagues have asked, I, I wanted to just sort of emphasize that when Mr. Moon, Ms. Schultz talked about the other factors, the other correlating factors that can influence how children are doing in a pre-K program all the way up through third grade, and we know that education level as well as income level are two big drivers. So just ever so briefly, more so for anyone who might be watching this beyond just the 12 or 11 board members and Dr. Brabran, using whether it's regression analysis or in this case because you're collecting data along the way, but there will be things applied here so that you'll not necessarily be able to say, okay, what's correlation versus what's causality? What do we achieve through this study is trying to find the more causal impact of things versus just that there's a correlation?
Yeah, it's a great question. And you're right, this is not a random assignment study. So we haven't taken kids when they're three and randomly assigned them to pre-K or no pre-K. So the best one can achieve under those circumstances is to assess as much as possible those other kinds of factors, parents' education, kinds of prior experiences that children have had. And to also, as we've done, assess the children in the very beginning so that you have that baseline of children. And then in that sense, children become their own control group. I become my own control group. Did I get better or did I not get better over the course of time and why or why not? So, you know, quite frankly, the advances in being able to do statistics of the sort that you alluded to have been considerable. And, and although we will not achieve the level of control and elimination of all these other factors as an experiment would, statistically, we can achieve a very, very high level of control so that a pattern of results that would emerge, one could look at and interpret as pretty close to causal.
Thank you. The other question I have is that over the years that I've been on the board, we've wrestled with the cost. And, and I actually have a, a son who will be a third-year UVA. And when we looked at the price tag for Head Start and full day, pre-K, it can be the cost of tuition and fees at UVA. And so we were saying, while all of us in this room, I think without question, recognize and believe in early childhood education, no question about it. It's essential. And I think it does contribute to achievement gaps when children don't have early childhood. But the question is the delivery model. And so I heard some of my colleagues asking the question, some families, again, based on education level, income level, they can get their children into an inexpensive, faith-based, but accredited half-day pre-K program at several thousand dollars a year, significantly different than a $16,000. So I, I look at this study and I think, is it almost going to be sort of a two-part effort for us as a school division, which is one, you know, really helping demonstrate early childhood education shows children make gains? And then is the second part going to be, how do we determine, do you need it full day? Will part-day, you know, still achieve that, especially if we start to focus on the executive functioning skills? Because I am a, a great believer of that as well, that you get that foundational skill and ability and it will carry you through in the classroom beyond. So if, I know Ms. Schultz asked the question, but when we start to benchmark these children, kindergarten through third grade, they will be with a cohort of Fairfax County kids who, like mine and many of the, the parents here in this room, went through that sort of faith-based but accredited part-time preschool. Is that something that was ever considered on how we would use that in terms of COGAT scores and, and N-NAT or things to, it wouldn't be pure like what you're doing. And I, again, don't question how you designed this, but at some point, I think we will still be faced with that dilemma of, do we look at still public-private opportunities to, to reduce our waitlist? Because some of us have argued, get every child off that waitlist and even if it's not Head Start, full-time, but something so that they're left without nothing.
Um, well, I think your point about this being a two-phase or two-part process, the, the first part being, you know, how are things working? Are they working? Are gains being noticed? And then why are those gains being, you know, being seen and to what could we attribute those gains? Are there things that occur for kids in classrooms? Are they program structures? Are they funding models? Those are all part and parcel of the work scope that we, you know, that we intend. I think the questions, and I've, I've heard a couple of times of the breadth of how far we'll be able to go out, I think this is where our partnership with the school division and county can really get us some purchase on some of those questions as we go.
And that's, I just want to reiterate, and again, without committing Dr. Pianta or the UVA to anything, he's personally been very open to trying to get a sense of what are the board's major issues and questions and concerns. So there's the things that are part of the formal IAS study and then there are the things that we might want to be able to contribute and partner on to better answer the board's needs. And, and that's in large part what the discussion today is going to help us kind of make some sense of that. So, you know, I'm collecting some information and notes about, you know, the types of program differences, the, the home experiences, you know, versus what happens in the classroom, the things that we want to look at with respect to the longer-term effects with advanced academic services and things of the like. So this is very helpful in terms of us thinking about, you know, the very specific Fairfax issues that we want to look at.
Thank you. And, and I, I do appreciate that this morning's discussion is not just simply the presentation of a, of a well, you know, appreciated study, but then how will this serve the 10th largest school division in the United States? And I, I do think, Dr. Presidio, that the reality is based on Fairfax County's economics and the funding we do receive from the board supervisors and its limitations. Having been, as my colleague Ms. Kofax noted, a member of the SCIP policy team, you know, we've, we've been wrestling with this now for four years, is, okay, we have a waitlist, but what do we do about it? How can we afford to move these children off? And so I, I do think down the road, if UVA can help us in looking at what do we see performance-wise between students whose families put them into their own, you know, private preschool, but many of them being faith-based, not anything fancy, but it is providing sort of that foundational learning, then, but to close out the disaggregating out, then the, the family influence of, you know, language and economics and, and education level. But again, Dean Pianta, thank you so much for not just the work you're doing for us, but taking the time to be here today with us. It's appreciated.
Thank you. Have Sandy followed by Ryan and then I will ask some questions. I'm assuming there are no quick go-backs. Okay, perfect. And I'll let Scott close us out.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very excited about this longitudinal study. I think that this will answer a lot of really critical questions for us. A, a couple of technical things. If I, if I understand it, this, your plan at this point is to go through 2021 and that's, that's going to be the, the end, the end?
That's, that's, that's the end of what we are funded to do.
To do so far.
On this project.
Okay.
I would anticipate that we will sometime in 2019 start thinking about, you know, subsequent set of proposals to continue.
Okay, that's great. And you'll be reporting back to us on some, with some regularity so we can see the preliminary? That would be great. One of the things from Dr. Presidio's shop that we've seen before from, from, from our, from FCPs experts is that there, there's a particular benefit to students that are non-English speaking. And I see that the majority of those in the study are, speak a different language at home. And this perhaps is a question for Dr. Presidio. Is that by design or do we do that because we know that? Or is it based, are these people in, are these students in the program for other reasons and it just happens that they speak other languages? If you understand what I'm trying to get at.
Right. So the eligibility requirements for participation in the program just so happens that a disproportionate number of those students come from homes where other languages, languages other than English are spoken in the home. And as Mr. Moon pointed out, there's a lot of different and important ways to look at the demographics of those students.
Right.
Income, for example, ethnicity, for example. But because of that importance of making sure that students who are coming from homes where other languages other than English are spoken, you know, we just chose to, you know, share that demographic slide with you today because it's really important that those students get the same kinds of quality preschool experiences that other students in the county might be able to receive.
And I appreciate that. In the past, when you brought us other data, I have wondered if we should formally give precedence to students who, who speak another language, but it looks like that may be happening in a different way. So perhaps that's, that's not, that's not needed. That was one of the questions I had. And this may be what Karen was getting at, but the HIPPI program, do you, do you know if HIPPI is part of this or it's not? Okay, all right, that's, because I do wonder too, you know, how, how effective that program is, because I, I know people who feel it's a very cost-effective program, it'd be good to know. But if it's not.
For folks that might be listening, the Home Instruction for Preschool Youth Program.
Yes, uh-huh. Right. And how, how are you going to deal with mobility? In some of our areas, mobility is a huge factor. So if you're trying to compare a student with themselves, how do you deal with, with that? And some, you know, in some of my areas, the, the annual mobility rate is 25% and above.
Right. I stay up at night thinking about this.
Oh, do you? Okay.
The, what, I can tell you that for the students who remain within the school division, we follow the students.
Okay.
Okay? So the mobility there is, is not a question. It would, it requires more effort, requires more time, but we will follow all of those students. For students who leave the school division, you know, we're just in a, we're, we're just in a tougher set of circumstances to be able to track them. And quite frankly, we may be able to do some things if they, if they remain within the state or move to neighboring divisions, just given the ability to track kids with state IDs, things like this. But that would be a secondary effort for us to, to try to do that. The fact that we will have information on all of the kids in the school division allows us to be able to get a little bit of purchase on the characteristics of kids who move and don't move in and out of the division so that if we do lose kids moving out of the division and lose kids to the sample, which, which is going to happen, we'll be able to know what kinds of features distinguish those kids and then factor that into our estimates of the impacts of pre-K experiences and school experiences. So it's tricky, but, you know, we've, we've done this in a lot of studies, quite frankly, with less comp, much more complicated set of circumstances, but it is a, it's a very big problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, well, I'm glad to see that you're, you're thinking about it very, very carefully and I'm, I'm sure you'll come up with a solution to that. My last question is, we, we have seen studies in the past on preschool that have shown, you know, perhaps not as great improvement long-term on academics, but have shown tremendous improvement on other things, the social side, people staying, you know, kids staying in school, not getting in trouble. That, is, is that going to be part of this or no?
We will, we will be able to provide in this particular part of the study through third grade, we will assess as many of those factors that are not the traditional, you know, how did you do on a test of academic skills type of factors.
Good, excellent.
Where, where those kids pop up later in terms of some of those, some of those outcomes that you described, we would either be able to hopefully continue the partnership on the study or the district would be able to use those data. We will hand the data back to the school division when we're done and to be able to track some of those.
I, I think this is a really important point to just kind of underscore the difference between this study and some of the other studies that you're referencing. Previous studies. Previous studies did not really look at what was happening with students in the intervening years after they left the preschool setting, right? So when you look at how are kids doing at the end of third grade? Well, the kid went to kindergarten and first grade and second grade and third grade, and we didn't really study what happened in those intervening years, where this study is really looking very closely at what's happening in the classroom in those intervening years and helping us really figure out what are best practices that need to happen in all of our classrooms that contribute and help us maximize on a student's early learning experiences in a pre-K program. So that's one of the things that I think is really exciting about this program or this study.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Ryan?
I would just echo my contact, my, my colleagues in saying that we are very honored to be partnering with you on this. And you wouldn't have any reason to know this, but we were actually neighbors. Back in 2008, I lived on the lawn. I could look right into your house, not that I did that.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I won't share any stories the other direction either.
Right, right. Yeah, right, right, right. But I think, right, as, as you hear the, the conversation around this board, Fairfax always wants to be the best at everything. And we really want to build on this model program that we have and make it, make it a model for the nation. And, you know, even though some will say that pre-K is beyond our purview as a K-12 system, I think all of us are in agreement that there's really nothing more important in terms of preparing our students for success in the system than, than our pre-K programs. I have two very quick questions. Who is actually funding this project?
The Institute of Education Sciences. It's part of the Department of Education, the federal government.
Okay, great. And then how did this partnership come about? How did, who contacted who?
Oh, well, we, we've known Maura for a long time. Maura was a UVA student way back, one of, one of our students, and, and we've maintained a collaborative connection for some period of time on smaller projects, other projects. And when, when this call for these proposals came out from the government to researchers, we looked very carefully at that, the conditions that would make that a successful application. And it was very clear to us that Fairfax was the place. And I initiated a, a conversation with Maura, who quickly brought in Dr. Persidio and, and others, and, and then we began the planning of the study.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close out my questions and then ask Dr. Brabran, again, ago, our great honor to partner with you. A lot of my questions were asked. I had a couple additional ones alluding back to, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I know we're talking about which programs are included.
Yeah.
And originally, it sounded like every program that was receiving public funding. So it sounds like HIPPI is not included, but are Bridge to K and early and family-lit programs included in this study? They are not.
No, not, neither of those are participating.
I know those are, but so when we gather data from those students
And those are really supplemental programs. Those, those are not really meeting the criteria of the research grant from IES in terms of what would, you know, qualify as, as a pre-K experience.
Yeah, these are, the, the intent of the study was to track kids who were going into essentially academic year-long, what looked like school experiences in the preschool year.
Okay, so when we say preschool, it is the academic year-long.
That's really what we're looking at.
But I guess my question is, since we have this opportunity, and I think, you know, many of us want to know the effectiveness of these programs because the funding is what it is, when we look at that full-K cohort coming in, and it's my understanding, we are looking to see, did they have some kind of experience? Is it possible there, because in the past I've been told that we can't gather that data, is it possible there, because they don't have the CIS before coming into K, to be able to say, okay, these students did Bridge to K, these students were in early lit, these students did HIPPI, these students were, maybe HIPPI is a little trickier because it's not the student, but rather the healthcare, the provider, the daycare provider. So are we able to at this point gather that data?
Well, Maura and I were just kind of sidebar-ing about that. That's the process that we've been working on with DIT is to try to get some of those supplemental programs in CIS so that we can actually code those programs along with the student and be able to provide that kind of data to Dr. Piata's team. So we're still working on that right now, but that's in process.
Do you think that it, so because this is for next year, likely we won't have that for next year or there's a possibility?
I think there's a, I think there's a possibility, but again, unfortunately, I've been out for the last two weeks and I haven't connect, I just got back this weekend, I haven't connected with DIT on this, but they were working on this very issue before I left for vacation.
Okay, so hopefully we can circle up again.
Yeah, so it's something we're working on.
Okay, thank you. And my only other question, so many other great ones have been asked, is I know there are several jurisdictions who, we've had this question before, who currently have funding for all students to attend pre-K, whether or not they are FRM eligible, and so all students are mixed. I understand DC has this, I believe Philadelphia has just passed a SOTAC to do this.
Right.
So do you think that our, the information we gather from this will help us, I don't know what they're doing and if they're gathering, doing any research, will help us to also in the future have some kind of comparison? You know, does having only students who are mostly FRM eligible in a program differentiate it significantly from a mixed program?
Yeah, it's a great question. I mean, you will have, you will have some heterogeneity within classrooms already, even within the children that are enrolled. So we will certainly look at those features. It's not going to be directly comparable to a, a universal program, which are what those programs are. At the same time, we do know that the universal programs, Georgia's been doing one, for example, for a very long period of time, Tulsa's another example, those, those programs enroll, even though they're universal, they still only enroll roughly 70% of the eligible kids. So, so they tend toward the attributes of families and kids that are the attributes of the families and kids that you're serving already, even when they're universal in nature. So for example, Philadelphia opened a, a universal program, it will be a low-income program.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so, so part of what we're trying to do is to track as much as possible the actual attributes of the kids and families as they enter so that, because those really become the comparison base.
I appreciate it. Sorry, I did have one more question, forgot about the parent components. I know you're going to be doing some interviews and I know some of the programs really, you know, whether it's working with parents to learn how to communicate with the school system, to set up emails, I know some of our programs do that. Will some of your interviews, and I assume will be multilingual, kind of look at parent engagement and that, that component in student success?
Yeah, that's one of the great opportunities we have. So we will have, again, we're asking all those questions of all of the parents on a parent questionnaire, the kinds of things you do with kids at home, what are your experiences when you engage the preschool, what's the quality, what do you do, how do you feel about it? But then we will be interviewing parents to see whether in fact, you know, what, how does that really experienced by a parent in a way that makes a difference for them and their family?
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful because I know we've seen, especially culturally, if we're coming from a culture where you say, no, you know, I just trust the school, and we're trying to engage parents in a new way and to become leaders and advocates for their kids, that would be really helpful, anything you can gather. Thank you so much, I greatly appreciate it. I don't know, Scott, if you have anything to add or say?
I would just say, you know, this, this discussion about being ahead of the curve, I can tell you what, we are ahead of the curve. We're partnering with someone like UVA and Sloan, you and your folks. Maura, what an opportunity for us to get to the bottom line. Here's my nugget, honestly, in my five years away with pre-K. You know, we've had standardized education in Virginia for K-12 for 20 years. Pre-K's not been standardized. It's not a standardized curriculum. It's not a standardized set of best practices. We've got different providers, provided differently in different ways. This is Fairfax County Public Schools getting ahead of the curve to say, what is the curriculum that drives student achievement in future years? What's the instructional delivery? What's the best practice for teachers? And then I think we're in a unique position to really use this study to lift up and tell folks around the country and in Virginia, these are the things you need to be doing wherever you're doing, even if it's not public dollars. We are spending public dollars on pre-K and folks want to know, are we getting the bang for the buck? We're beginning to assess this and we're assessing it over multiple years. You really want to see what happens when that kid gets to third grade, right? Let's be honest, right? That's been, how does that kid do? And the quicker we can answer those questions, the more I think we can make a case for an additional funding and what the model looks like that's giving us the biggest bang for the buck. So I'm delighted, this is a great, this is great news in week two, and it's a great, it's a great conversation that we're going to have with the school board and with this community because it is important. We've invested a lot, there's some mixed research nationally, we've got to come up with the best model and then Fairfax needs to embrace it and run with it. So I'm excited about the work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Let's take a three-minute break.